Everyone's present, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
All right, so, thank you, everyone, for joining the special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor Council. Today is August 24th, 2020, approximately 6:40 PM. I wanted to, this meeting be live, authors, social distancing, and face mask in compliance with the governor's ever-changing and often poorly thought-out executive orders. The council majority wanted Zoom only. Our past four or five Zoom meetings have shown us, the Democratic majority wants no interaction with the public. They do not turn on their cameras, for the most part, and are rarely showing their faces. Picture the Wizard of Oz behind a curtain. To me, that is unacceptable. I'll let the residents decide what's acceptable to them. I offered to compromise and have the meeting bi-located, just as I did for the August 12th meeting, when the council majority did not show up, except for Councilwoman Sabari, who could be heard laughing in the background when her daughter called in during my town hall discussion. Not only did they reject my attempt at a compromise...
That would not be true.
Let me finish, and then you can have the floor.
No.
Not only did, not only, not, let me finish, let me finish, and then you can speak. And that's the rule tonight, no one interrupts anyone. Not only, not only did they reject my attempt at a compromise, but the clerk herself was complicit and insubordinate, when she repeatedly failed to follow my directions to notice a live, and then a compromise live and Zoom meeting. Under applicable New Jersey law, when the council majority asks for a meeting, I must arrange it, not them, not the clerk, that's the law.
Not true.
It's only if I fail to arrange it, that they can take over. That did not happen here, and they, with the clerk, violated my rights as your elect mayor. This is another example of what I call the deep burrow, where a dying political mission is trying to hold on to power for nefarious purposes. Because we have much burrow...
Can't hear you.
...when they're not meeting, or an August 12th meeting, I will call this meeting to order, under protest, in the best interest of the residents of Englewood Cliffs. With all rights reserved against the council majority and municipal clerk, I call this meeting to order. Given the Zoom format, I hereby demand that all elected members of the governing body turn on their video cameras, so that the public and I see you at all times, after the meeting is called to order, which is right now, until it is adjourned. As the chair of the meeting, I reserve the right to remove you from this meeting if you do not have your camera on, as I have no other way to determine if we have a continuing quorum to transact business. Closed session is also problematic, as no one else is permitted in the room, and traditionally, we do not permit phones into closed session, phone calls into closed session, which a Zoom without live video amounts to a phone call. I expect that there be no interruptions. When someone has the floor, please wait your turn, raise your hand, I'll let you come in after the person is done speaking. And again, I also reserve the right to remove anyone who violates the borough's rules and ordinance and the laws in the state of New Jersey.
Can't hear you, Mario. I guess that's a good thing.
Can you hear me now? Lizette?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Sabari seems to have a lot to say tonight, and I'll look forward to her comments later on. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kranjak?
Yeah.
Councilperson Pharaoh? Sabari?
He said here.
Oh?
Lizette, did you hear him? You didn't hear Councilman Pharaoh?
Councilwoman, oh, I can't hear you.
I'm here.
Okay.
Is he over there?
Council, Councilman Song?
I can't hear you, I can't see you. Again, if we don't see you, I don't think you're here.
Councilman Aversa?
I'm here.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Mr. Bonica?
Here.
And municipal clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
I think you skipped me, Lizette.
Oh.
You cannot hear the borough clerk.
I, Councilwoman Sabari, I said it earlier.
Okay, I'm here.
So, for the borough, borough clerk, is everyone present?
Yes, they are, Mayor.
Is everyone present, borough clerk?
Yes, Mayor, everyone is present.
Okay, and you're assured that the people whose video cameras are not on are actually present?
Well, I recognize their voices.
Okay, let's do a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to give everyone a COVID-19 update. And as of 6:00 PM today, we have three active cases in town. We've had a total of 72 cases throughout the entire pandemic. We've had a total amount of five deaths. And the last positive case, just checking, was August 19th. So, we're, we're doing really well, just continue being careful and safe with social distancing when you're walking about town or in the parks, or Borough Hall, which Borough Hall requires face masks. Madam clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Add a good notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Dating time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, so, for the record, I don't see on video some council people's Sabari, Song, Aversa, or Oh, and therefore, I, I reserve the right to challenge whether or not we actually have a quorum now, or at any time during this meeting, until I see you, which may end up invalidating all actions taken at this meeting. I just, before we go into closed session, I just wanted to say a few comments regarding affordable housing. Lizette, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm actually under Borough Hall with Councilmen Pharaoh and Wu. People are welcome to join us here if they wish and Zoom in from here, but I wanted to make a few comments regarding affordable housing. There has been much discussion about my lawsuit against Councilmembers Sabari, Oh, Aversa, and Song, relating to, one, their concerted effort to exclude Councilman Wu and Pharaoh, and me, from participating in the affordable housing litigations. And they're voting to block an investigation of their actions, the actions of the attorneys that they direct, and a special court master. These council members, led by Deborah Sabari, have been our council majority since they took office in January 2019. Ellen Park was also part of this misguided council majority in 2019. If actions ever had consequences, and certainly the November 2018 election has proven that, and it may forever ruin Englewood Cliffs, permit me to explain. I sued for an investigation of this council majority. There is just too much American sentiment in the so-called New Jersey malloral affordable housing doctrine, the way it is administered by New Jersey courts, resulting social engineering, and the lengths local council majorities will take to expand it and block mayors like me from reining it in. No longer are people told to work hard, do better, and aspire to move where they wish, but rather, New Jersey now mandates that people should get to live wherever they wish, regardless of whether they can afford to do so. While that may sound ridiculous, socialistic, and misguided, it is what our governor, our legislature, and our New Jersey Supreme Court think is best for you. Democrats and Republicans in elected office have spent decades letting the Mount Laurel doctrine expand its social... Your home value, because there was always something for themselves, or for your upper friends. Note that our governor pushes high-density housing from mansion in a socially-distanced zeitgeist. Our property rights, our home values, our due process rights, and our rights to have local zoning governed by local government have been simply canceled by the New Jersey Supreme Court, the Superior Courts, their special masters, and other local lawyers and councils throughout New Jersey. These institutions are the tools that carry out our form of New Jersey Marxism. Our very own council members Sabari, Song, Aversa, Oh, and Ellen Park have been all too willing to make their political sponsors happy with them. As we sit here, they are secretly delivering our town on a silver platter to the Fair Share Housing Council socialists in Normandy. Remember, the Mount Laurel doctrine started off as an anti-discrimination mandate in the realm of access to housing, which I believe, we all agree, was good and noble. But 40 years later, it is nothing more than a Marxist-style land grab and vote grab, to ensure that your home values end up in someone else's pocket. The state of New Jersey takes all of your hard work and your work ethic for granted. Equally bad is that the Mount Laurel doctrine creates a political payday for the politicians who back its enlargement, and it keeps them in office through political contribution kickbacks. The governor doesn't care about you, New Jersey judges don't care about you or your constitutional rights, and the legislature doesn't care about you, your families, or how hard you work to better your and your family's lives. For 40 years, with Democrats and family Republicans as well running New Jersey, you tax-paying residents of Englewood Cliffs in New Jersey have bought off the socialist and the national resources, the National Resources Fund, Arbor Day Foundation, the Sierra Club, they remain silent while there is a progressive attack on the view shed, wetlands, trees, air, and water runoff. Were they all bought off? I assure you, the Fair Share Housing, Normandy, and the New Jersey courts are left unchecked, Englewood Cliffs will complete the Fort Lee skyline in 10 years. But it's even worse. You see, what takes place in New Jersey is that towns are asked to settle with fair share housing. Quotes. The garbage thrown out at local governments to settle, special court masters utter Orwellian doublespeak and logic, till yet the pressure escalates, both from fair share housing and developer friends. Following their script, start name-calling, using race-baiting and hate speech. They get the Star Ledger editorial, the name-calling. Ignore the right local governments and start visions lacking in judicial reasoning, logic, or... Says if those citizens still have not settled, judges like ours give you a number of units to build, that you must satisfy the instant when she provides that number to you, by waving a magic wand, I suppose, just in case you didn't have your attention yet. All my... Have, and others on governing body have excluded from the process, likely, hoping that there is a settlement, so it never becomes an issue. Can you imagine what she would have done if Fair Share Housing was excluded from the process? If your town still hasn't settled, the judge decides to escalate further. In our case, the special master on February 14th, 2020, tried extorting me by requiring us to build in addition to having a developer build. The special master stated, "That's what the judge wanted." Well, if that's what the judge wanted, she and the special master violated New Jersey law, and both must be removed and held accountable. This whole time, the judge won't let us appeal, further escalating the pressure to settle. If a town still has not settled, then the judge, because in our case, essentially voids and cancels our elected government, replacing it with yet another gang of judicially-appointed officers, along with their lawyers, all of whom our town has to pay for. The end result is that our constitutional rights, the due process, non-governmental taking of property, and guarantee of an effective form of local government have been repeatedly violated by this Jersey and fair share housing. So why do judges want affordable houses to settle? Because if there isn't, then all the due process violations, all the unlawful taking violations, and all guaranteed laws violations are swept under the judicial rug, aimed on the New Jersey local governments that have settled, for all railroad, you know your demand over the last 40 years. Thought you were either buying... Rest assured... Where your home, Fair Share Housing Council, the person appointed, let's call them expeditors, pressurers.
Mayor, are you on? We lost you.
Shouldn't...
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Lizette?
Yes, I can.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Needs to be changed, and Englewood Cliffs should not be changed by the housing agenda. Fighting. Do we have on our, well, a few weeks ago...
Mayor? Mayor, are you speaking?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Lizette, can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor, I can.
Can you hear me, Lizette? Okay, okay. Who do we have on our side? A few weeks ago, a... Executive Order, stop... And then there's a padding for no discrimination of local governments, if towns don't, hence the president and secretary call, return local zoning to local... I am pub... But, in essence, the president... Local governments, I'm publicly, publicly calling on this council, and the attorneys who assert our constitution courts as a state of clear orders are violating our rights with the New Jer... Incidentally, I've extended an invitation to Englewood Cliffs, and I truly hope he does. I have seen firsthand...
Mayor, you cannot continue to mute the council. We are allowed to speak. You're using this for a political pulpit. Now, you need to stop, and let's get on with our meeting.
Please, let me drop it, suspect there's something going on here. Okay, let me finish, and then we'll, we'll go into closed session. After the last four and a half years as mayor, I now know, and you should know, and against you, in the New Jersey Supreme Court, your governor, United States, and then your congressman passed a local democratic law... Let me tell you about fair share... Very little transparency, yes. Do know that government owner, whatever, were given judicial to decide how town gets destroyed in the process.
Mayor?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes. Mayor, are you speaking? Councilman Wu, is the mayor speaking?
Okay, that's, I'm not muted now.
I guess if we can't hear the mayor, then perhaps, you know, he doesn't want to run the meeting, because he keeps muting all the council members.
I did not mute the council members.
Okay, the host, not you, and it's Mario, is muting. It's not okay, that's not the way this works.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Yeah, I can hear you, Mary.
Mayor, you can't keep muting us.
Let me just finish, and then you could have the floor.
We can't, we can't even see your face. You look like a Darth Vader.
That's kind of you. Well, it's dark back there.
We can't even see your face, Mario, so what's the point?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Now you're on there twice.
I witnessed, in fact...
This is what happens when you play games with the system. That's why I'm not on my video recording, because this is what you do, you play games.
There's no games being played.
You're playing games.
Look, I'm trying to speak. You can hear me? You can hear me? You can hear me?
Just get on with the, the meeting. Forget about how you look, or, you know, reading about your prepared statement, okay? Just get on with the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll do that, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, so here, let me just finish up, and then you can have the floor.
You know what?
So, in fact, let me finish.
What's going on in New Jersey, if you don't like me, and you're a claps, you can move out, okay? Don't keep, like, bringing us down with what's going on with...
Let me finish, please. I didn't interrupt you, you don't...
Well, you look like a Darth Vader again, okay?
Thank you. Name-calling is really what you do well, and, you know, unfortunately, the lighting is bad on the Borough Hall.
Well, I don't know, you know?
Well, you wouldn't know, because you're not here, where you should be.
Well, Adaversa is too muted. You unmute him?
Governor Murphy, state comptroller.
Adaversa is too muted. Please unmute us.
I didn't mute anybody.
Mario, really?
I witnessed firsthand how they failed to negotiate in good faith, and if they are running late, or an hour late for a court hearing, while everyone else is punctual, judges will wait for their grand arrival, and keep all of us waiting for them to stroll in and to destroy your...
I was muted the whole time, Mario, so please don't mute me again.
I didn't touch the mute buttons, guys.
Yeah, okay.
Tax payers and elected officials don't matter in these court hearings. Fair share housing is in charge, and every New Jersey affordable housing judge has bowed down to them. We have a special master. She doesn't listen to a single word...
It's the same speech every time, Mario.
She enforced normal order. Our, no, for the better part of a year, and her attorney refused to draw attention to that fact in court. Instead, they covered for her, and we were wrongfully portrayed as not doing anything to meet our affordable housing obligations. Her behavior took a sinister turn, as I mentioned, on February 14th. Our own attorneys admitted this was a violation of applicable law, but they and this Democratic council majority refused to do anything about it. Judge Farrington refuses to permit us to appeal the very decisions that she is forcibly implementing through the heavy hand of the Mount, of Mount Laurel and her enforcers. Our own council majority refuses to assert your rights, because the state Democratic Party controls them. Our borough administrator refuses to assert your rights, to ask questions and to demand that I receive all the information that I am entitled to. Our lawyers, Trautner and Serenian, have excluded me, and in so doing, have breached their professional responsibility, as they are supposed to represent all of us. Last month, Councilman Song stated that the other attorney, Wunsch, has no affordable housing experience, but is cheaper than the others.
Mario, this, you're just going on and on, there is business that needs taking care of. Please stop your political grandstanding.
I got more.
It's political grandstanding.
No, there's more here.
No, it's political grandstanding.
Let me just finish. While the Democrats in our council don't want an investigation of their actions, and voted against it twice, even in violation of conflicts of interest laws, and while I could not get all the information I needed, I did happen upon what may explain a few things going on in Englewood Cliffs. Remember, I said the Mount Laurel doctrine has evolved into a corrupt socialist scheme to reallocate your home values? Remember, the entirety of the New Jersey affordable housing scheme is based on feigned help for low-income people, when in fact, the pillars of the New Jersey affordable housing scheme, Mount Laurel doctrine, is really simply about reallocating your property value to a developer, fair share housing, and politicians. Why the politicians? Because no one else can be bought off so easily, to keep the entire sham going for what they would like to believe is another 40 years. Channeling Prime Minister Thatcher, I say that the problem, however, is that even the politicians, or useful idiots, I'll call them, won't have enough of your home value to keep the sham going for much longer. As I mentioned, the person in charge among the Democratic council majority is Deborah Sabari, very vocal here tonight. Jimmy Song has rarely said a word, Ed, Ed has been on council for 10 years and does nothing, Gloria, same thing. If, if you recall, Sabari and Song ran on the Democrat ballot in 2018, and used as their slogans, "Restore financial integrity..."
Mario. I didn't want to use this pulpit to go back...
...to campaign slogans, and they did fool enough voters to get elected. However, as we have seen...
How is it I fooled enough voters? I had more votes than you did.
However, as we have seen, campaign slogans are even harder to live by. Sabari and Song repeatedly violate their slogans, not sooner were they sworn in.
That is absolutely not the truth, and I'll address it as soon as you stop with your political grandstanding.
So, having watched Sabari try to give away our town to developer...
Are you serious?
...and fair share housing, I always thought there must be more to what drives her.
I've lived here for 25 years, are you kidding me?
You can have the floor after me, and I'm sure you'll want it. I always thought there must be more to what drives Sabari, and so I started my own limited investigation with publicly available information, because I owe it to everyone in Englewood Cliffs and New Jersey. Exposed the Mount Laurel doctrine and the people who champion it. They don't help the poor, they help themselves. While Mount Laurel has become synonymous with anything goes, it turns out that there is only one Deborah Sabari in the United States. She's your councilwoman, she's a real estate company executive, she is running the Englewood Cliffs affordable housing litigation. She is the rep. She is trying to split development with your home values, she is trying to settle with Fair Share Housing Council, and she also appears to be the individual who pled guilty to a felony on January 20th, 1995, in United States. who pled guilty to a felony on January twentieth, nineteen ninety-five, in the United States District Court for the Southern District of New York, with Judge Kevin Duffy presiding. May he rest in peace. I will provide a copy of the Southern District document along with this speech to our Borough Clerk. So much for Sabari and Song's "Restore Financial Integrity" slogan.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about, but I guess it's something that wasn't cold records, like your lawsuit from your
She appears to be a convicted felon, and she is the person that the Democratic Council majority has selected to lead the affordable housing battle. It's no wonder she and O'Aversa Song and E. Parks sponsored an unfavorable settlement last year and are trying again this year. It's no wonder why our lawyers called two witnesses in the affordable housing trial, and it's no wonder why, to this day, she and her colleagues on council insist on letting Normandy build high-density residential housing at eight hundred Sylvan. It is wholly ridiculous that the local Democratic Party champions, who appears to be a convicted felon, and continues to stand behind her of a socialist reallocation of your home values. Given the party's leading role in our affordable housing matters since January two thousand nineteen, I declare that the entire process has been irreparably tainted, must begin over, and the borough must retain attorneys who will assert our constitutional rights in federal court. We need an investigation more than ever. To sum up and conclude, we have now learned that a convicted ex-felon, who happens to be the head of a real estate company, is supervising all matters relating to real estate development that will negatively and materially impact each of your home values. That is who the Democratic council majority put in charge of your future. Let that sink in. Go to closed session. Have a motion to go into closed session.
Oh, you just, okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna address that today, but I will address it.
Did you read the Open Public Meetings Act yet?
Excuse me?
Lizette, did you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement yet?
Yes, I did, Mayor.
Lizette, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Yes, Mayor, I did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. We have a motion to go into closed session. Again, a copy of this, my statement will be available, and a copy of the Southern District New York document sheet will be available as well.
Who made the motion to go into closed?
You're muted, Lizette.
You're muted, everyone, Lizette.
No, Mayor, I did not mute anyone.
Well, can, can the council members unmute themselves, please?
So moved.
Wait, I need a, a motion in a second.
So moved. Second, Lizette, Jimmy.
Thank you. Councilperson Pharoah?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
I just want you to know I've been muted the entire time by Mario, moron.
I did not unmute you, Mr. Aversa. I'm very glad you're
I was muted.
We're all muted, we're all muted, Mr. Councilman Aversa. I don't want to be muted. I don't want to be muted. I don't care. I don't want to be muted. That might be acceptable to you. That's not acceptable to me.
Well, it's not acceptable that we can't see your face.
That's not your business. What is your business is to hear my voice.
We go into closed session, that you will be alone.
That doesn't matter. I'll give you my word, I am, and that doesn't matter to you anyway.
Your word is useless, Ed.
Yeah, well, so is yours. Mario, you have embarrassed this town. You sound like the ignorant person you are. Do you know how you sounded?
Really?
You don't even get it that this is what, what affordable housing is about, to give people a chance. People like you are the reason we, we have, we need movements to help people out who have been downed away by you. It's unbelievable. I just want you to know
You're a clown.
This town is not like that. That, those are your words.
Oh, you're right. We, we don't discriminate against people, and we don't name, name quality, right?
Mario, it was embarrassing to hear you, I gotta tell you.
Really? Well, what about the conviction? You want to talk about that?
Just, just embarrassing.
You want to talk about the conviction, or is that not embarrassing?
I vote, I vote yes to go to closed session, and I don't
Yeah, you should vote yes to go to closed session.
Unbelievable.
Wish, by the way, I'd like I want to record closed session. I want to record closed session. It's been minutes, our, our
Councilman Aversa, I was taking a vote?
And I said yes to go to closed session.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And, and closed session will be recorded today. All right, so let's go into closed session.
I have to read the
So, just for the public, we are going into closed session.
Mayor, I have to read the resolution?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Lizette, you didn't call on me yet.
I said, yes, I did.
Hey, you got a second? Call it, Mayor.
Um, I will be reading Resolution one seventeen, whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs have deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, and whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, MJSAC seven colon four dash twelve, affecting litigation regarding Borough of Englewood Cliffs of affordable housing, eight hundred Sylvan LLC versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, and personnel, clerical
So, we didn't have a close session.
I'm sorry?
All, all the favor, go into closed session.
Hi. Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I will be putting members from the public into the waiting room.